Get some microphone checks, I am.
Yo, 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 yo.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Okay then.
Let me, let me hear you say something for.
Four twenty, four twenty was happy.
Alright.
I put a lot of tequila in here.
That's what be happening. It's something about this room or something. Pouring up.
I didn't even, I didn't mean to and I sifted, I was like, oh god.
It's a big bottle too though.
That don't help you, it got a big opening.
I've been seeing everybody drink that bottle and I don't even know what's the big deal about it like.
Costco?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they said it's supposed to be the same thing as, well, the vodka's supposed to be made by Grey Goose and the tequila made by somebody else. It's another name brand and it's supposed to be the same shit.
Yeah.
So I figured I'd give it a shot. See what it's talking about. It's a big bottle, it lasts a while.
That's the one everybody go to.
Yeah, I've been seeing it everywhere, like, this is a little new song.
What are, what are, um, what are we introducing you as?
Need a love. Just need a love.
We're making it happen, Kevin.
I should have put on socks, my ankle's cold. I ain't never experienced it before, it's just my ankles. I ain't never experienced it, this is the first time I just realized like.
My ankles cold.
My ankles. Maybe because of the vent under the head, it's from under the chin. Yeah, that's one of these, I gotta figure it out.
Ankle happened to ass nigga.
I feel like this is a medical condition if I can't just figure out why I did it. I gotta go to the doctor like.
No, he got cold ankles, he gonna be here my.
Keep with thermometer in my pocket. What's this nigga telling you? How your ankles feel? I had to have on three pair of socks.
Now ankle socks though.
Nail now, up the hill.
You usually do, that's what you usually have on them, polo them long ass.
I do have on long socks most of the time. I almost need to sit in my crocs. Like, I forgot I had on my crocs just now, but it's height, I might put my foot on the table. I'm probably not. It's only the second time I've ever done that.
I'm gonna say you don't put your foot on the table.
Feel like my mama watch. Took goddamn feet off the table.
Well, it's your house now, this time.
Did he, oh.
He gonna drink away.
Alright, he probably blew all kinds of shit in your drink. That's why y'all put your feet on the table. Makes sense tonight, it makes sense, fucking with you, it in my house though.
It's your table, y'all, goddamn fuck that shit.
We ready for it?
Yeah.
You don't sound like you ready.
It don't sound like it at all. You sure?
Right.
Me closing. I don't think so, I don't think so.
I'm ready, I didn't know what your title was and I was about to try to think of one and I was like, nah, it seem like you probably got one.
Nah, I was just gonna say, special sessions, need, need, need a love. Now I'm confused as to what's happening, nah, I don't think so, I don't think so. I don't know what's happening right now. Gather myself. Special sessions need a love, take seventeen point two. Ay. Ay, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, welcome back to another one, baby. You know what this is already, y'all know what this is, let me tell you what this is. This is a special session.
And you know.
Brought to you by yours truly, the Smoking Permitted Podcast.
And you know.
Bob.
Huh?
I bet you some of these people watching, they clicked on it, they don't even know what a special session is.
Y'all know what it is?
They thought it was gonna be a regular show.
You thought it was gonna be a regular show?
They ain't even see her sitting right there.
You ain't seen her sitting there?
Tell, tell them what a special session is, Bob.
Special sessions is when us, the smokers. You know how hard it was to get that high? I can't do it no more. Um, special sessions is when we, the smokers, from the Smoking Permitted Podcast, find somebody or see somebody or be aware or alert of somebody who is around us, near us, or on our radar for some reason, form or fashion, and we wanna know a little bit more about them. And we want you to know a little bit more about them, so we bring them to you for that very reason, and right now, we've done it again. This is a special sessions featuring Need a Love with the Smoking Permitted Podcast, and we in this bitch, you feel me?
I don't really.
To my right. It's the honorable Reverend Kato Jackson.
How y'all doing that though? Hold your applause to the end, I'll be here all night.
I'm Bob Jaques. And like I said, building, for the first time, hopefully not the last. We got Need a Love, y'all, say what's up to the people.
What's up, what's up, everybody, how y'all doing? I'm so excited about being here, y'all, you got me laughing, I, I'm like, I ain't got like sore cheeks when I leave, I'm just smiling and laughing.
Yeah, that's a good sore. There's only a couple of good sores in life, and one of them is from laughing. Uh, two five six seven eight eight seven three three nine, askthesmokers@gmail.com. You know, you know what the deal is, man, fuck with us, man, we got all the playlists for you to see. We said silence the phone.
She got two of them.
Oh, you on silence.
I did.
You a half silencer.
You a drug dealer.
I'm not a drug dealer.
Get you caught up too. Them little things, you be like, dang, I thought I get them both and I ain't get them both that time and they got me. Now I'm living here, out of the twenties.
I am, sorry y'all, that was not supposed to happen, let me turn this thing off.
You're not a drug dealer.
No, I'm not a drug dealer.
Tell the people what you are though.
Convince them.
My mama said anybody with two phones.
Ain't no good. So what's happening, y'all, I'm Need a Love, I am Huntsville's loving sex coach, that's what I do.
A loving sex coach?
Yeah.
Okay then. Well, man, the game, coach.
Yes.
So a sex coach like, like if they read the do it, you would come to their house and coach them like.
Right, like they ain't never did it before, you'd be like, just go here?
No, well. I wouldn't necessarily have to be there. But I am for enhancing, for people that's looking to like get into different, um, things, they don't want the vanilla style sex life, yeah, they'll have.
You're like.
Enhancement and enrichment.
Uh, a kinkologist.
It's a sexologist.
Sex regular.
I say, it's, it's not just.
Somebody wants spicy shit, so you a kinkologist.
Or intimacy, like they struggling with intimacy or connection, yeah, like they don't like to be touched and stuff like that.
Motherfuckers touch.
Yeah, what can we do about that, cause I don't like.
You gotta love some like.
I be telling my kids, like that hugs long enough, get off me. Get off me, alright, we hug, alright.
Get some boundaries, but yeah, but a healthy form of connection, cause some people can touch you too much, and it's kinda like, okay, you doing too much, but, you know, just kinda helping people with that portion, and then the love is just connection, like knowing how to be romantic, knowing how to date, like these are things people are really out here struggling with, which is just.
What does that mean, how to date, people don't know how to date?
Oh, no.
What, what's, what's a bad date?
A bad date. Um, I've heard a lot of different things, so like a person is just sitting there and they like on their phone the whole time, if you took time to, to take them out, and that's both male and female, like, and then you just on your phone the entire time, we here like, not saying nothing, you just on your phone, like I would feel like I waste my money, especially if I paid for it, would you pay for that?
I ain't paying for it.
You pay for that.
I ain't gotta waste my money. If you on your date at dinner, I hope you got Apple Pay on there. If you on your phone at dinner, push the button on the side twice.
Yeah, like, I'm just saying, like, you know, that, somebody that's, you know, expecting sex at the end of a date, that's what ladies talk about.
What's wrong with that?
Huh?
Huh?
You said what's wrong with it? Most people, well, I don't know, people say that's a bad date because it puts pressure. Pressure or expectation.
You putting some pressure on it, yeah.
Yeah, expectation.
That'd be weird. That'd be kinda R wordy.
So like I put, right, you know what's happening after this, right, you know. Right, aight, you count down the minutes until we gonna be in this room together, you know, so like people consider stuff like that, you know, and just people not really knowing how to just communicate, date, talk, you know, plan something outside of just Netflix and chill.
Yeah, yeah, I heard this big now.
Netflix and chill?
Yeah, like I, I used. I used to go on dates for real, like, we gotta go somewhere.
They didn't have Netflix though.
They had Netflix, but they had cable, you could TNT and chill.
Netflix, you would've, on demand, anything?
No, uh, we, I gotta know you before you coming up in, in here. I don't, I don't feel safe over there. I mean, after like three dates.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's three hotel dates or three like dinner dates?
Nah, I, three dinner dates. If it's been three hotel days, you can't never come over here. You can't come over here.
Oh my god, y'all are silly, but yeah, all of that, like Netflix and chill is hard, or situationships right now are taking over.
Situationships.
Yeah, we love good, you know, that's, that's the new thing, and then people be like situationships, which is, you know, as I've been doing single coaching and getting to singles mixers in Huntsville, that comes up a lot. Cause people have all different definitions of what a situationship is, which I don't think a different situationship is.
I feel like a situationship mean we fucking.
That's what. Now people turn them into emotional connections, especially, you know what I'm saying?
Fucking be having emotional connections and people can't.
You in a relationship now.
Yeah. That's what they say.
Well, every, nah, everything, and every interaction with a human is a relationship.
It's a bond.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you're right.
But they're turning situationships, but not having accountability for them is what makes them a situationship and not a relationship.
You can count your friendships.
Yeah.
That have extras to them.
Yeah, that's my friend, we gonna have all these ties, I'm gonna treat you like you my, my boyfriend or my girlfriend, but then we not together, we don't go together.
It depend on what you say, what you, what all you doing is in the treatment, under the treatment umbrella, cause.
I feel like if you doing more than fucking, you finna be in a relationship.
What's more than fucking?
With no title.
More than fucking.
Like y'all can't just hang out, no time?
Nah, you on your way to, you like that person there, yeah.
See, that's what you would say a situationship, but I was told one person that was like, oh, it could be a healthy situationship.
I don't think, I don't think you, I think you could, I think you could, yeah, look at this, they're all relationships, it don't matter.
I mean, you right, but like a romantic relationship.
Nah, 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 you can go, you can go and enjoy the same activities from time to time, outside of y'all fucking, and y'all not be in a relationship.
But somebody gonna catch feelings.
You can't do that too often.
And then you be like.
So situations, situationships come up a lot, yeah, 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 right now, definitely.
Yeah.
Where, um, where, where you from?
I am from Highland Home, Alabama.
Wait a second.
Ain't it, what?
Repeat.
Highland Home.
Highland Home.
That's the name of the town.
One word too, as you said.
Yeah, Highland, Home.
Okay. I went to Hollins Elementary.
Yeah Huntsville, no, 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 Huntsville, it's down towards Montgomery, but past like the hope, like going towards the beach, but yeah. Yeah, I'm country country, like that would country.
So what was it like growing up there in Highland Home, I ain't know, what's the closest city that I might, that somebody that's never?
Montgomery. Mergam.
How, how far is that?
That's what they call it.
Oh, they do. It took me a minute to put it together.
It was my, yeah, so originally from there. Three hours from Huntsville.
No.
From Montgomery.
Oh, from my, thirty minutes, so you like outskirts. So like Huntsville, Athens, you know, where we are, like the outskirts of, yeah, the cater, so it'd be same thing, yeah. I'm from Huntsville, nigga, you from Brownsboro, that's how they treat us, nigga, you from Highland Home, chill out. Y'all get treated like that, that's how we got treated.
Nah, I'm not from.
They would go by your county or something, your city, so the first couple of numbers you would know from that person's tag. They would be doing that shit, but they don't do it no more.
Yeah.
Yeah, they still do it?
If I didn't.
I, I ain't know it was a secret though.
Yeah, I rep, I rep my Highland Home, that's where my roots are from, but people, most time I tell people I'm from Montgomery, but I don't like claiming Mergam, cause I'm not a Montgomery person.
So what was it like in Highland Homes, like you grew up, a lot of family, cousins, sisters, brothers, mom?
We, yeah, we had eighteen acres of land. And we all stayed together, so my cousins, my aunties, my uncles, everybody in the same plot land. And we would just ball out.
You was from the one stoplight city?
Yeah, like, yeah, one stoplight, one school, one mailbox, we all just share the same, I'm just playing.
Barefoot, you played outside barefoot a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we didn't play, we didn't play, you know, in the country, you ain't got no food, you ain't got nothing to do, so we, look, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta have fun, you just gotta create an imagination if you live where I'm from, you gotta, you gotta get out there for real, and, we have, um, neighbors and stuff, we have cousins. I'm gonna play with my cousins.
I went to my grandma's house, it was like that, and I ain't, I ain't like the country.
What?
No, no, it boring as hell in the country. I didn't have no imagination. I wanted to do the real shit, I don't, uh, I can't imagine. This stick is not an airplane cousin, cause it's like, I don't give a fuck, how many doors does she make? That's how they airplane.
Yeah, like you can shoot, they shoot nobody flinching, it was, people didn't lock their doors, like it's just real, like, you know, like, that was, you know.
Where, where were you in the age rankings, were you like in the middle of the kids that y'all was around, you the older one?
Nah, we were the youngest, we were the babies of the, I have a twin sister.
Okay then.
So we, we were the last.
What are the two kinds of twins?
Fraternal and, um, identical.
Which one are you?
Fraternal, we don't look nothing alike, mhm.
Which one, are you the oldest?
I am, three minutes, three minutes everybody. Three minutes old. I am, I used to make her wait on our birthday to open.
You mean first.
You got three, four, I mean, she'd be mad as hell, y'all, she, and on her hands to play. I'll make her wait, like, you finna wait, nobody tell you to be the baby. She got treated like the baby, she gonna wait, she gonna wait, yeah.
You should have been doing what you was doing. You should have been paying attention.
You seen the light, go to the.
Time to go, you wasn't ready.
She still treat like the baby, shoot, she's wait them three minutes now. But yeah, that's what, we, we kinda were the last, the last little ones out of school, me, her and my cousin Juicy.
Okay, Juicy.
Juicy, Juicy, just called it Juicy Fruit.
Juicy Fruit, man, alright. Wish they'd do something to somebody.
Yeah, she did.
Man, where?
She did, she threw a couple of people up against the wall.
Yeah. Nah, she was.
Damn, juicy, man, what she thought about it, like it was that one time.
I was just saying, I was saying she. But yeah, we grew up small, like just together, you know, and, and family was everything, you know.
That's what's up, that's what's up, it's good to, it's good to, uh, meet people that got that kinda experience and get to be around a lot of family and all their family get along, get along for the most part.
Oh, I was finna say, I don't know about that lad for now, we.
Oh, yeah, you gonna have some problems.
We throw them deuces sometime, but we, we come back together. Yeah, you got your grandmama on the property, you know what I'm saying? Granny will be like, y'all better get them kids. That's how we grew up, Flojo, Flojo was, kept the kids and the family together, so.
See, I don't be no, my grandparents lived like way far away in other states.
Yeah, we had to take the drill.
Generations of their families.
Yeah, so.
Kato got a question for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let me see, well, we ain't gonna, I got another question for you, um. Call, we might say anything.
Yeah, y'all agree.
So, um, Bob.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open, so.
My call was right here. Got a superpower.
He got a superpower?
It's kinda weird, yeah, I know, um, just bear with me.
Okay, go ahead.
Bob's superpower is he's able to make wishes come true. Anything you could imagine, something tangible, it has to be something you could, you could touch, something you could see, anything your heart could imagine, you can receive this, but of course, there's a catch, there's always a catch.
I was finna say.
Someone you've met in your past. I don't, I don't know, just someone you passed and, and had a conversation with someone, you spoken to, maybe someone you was in school with, somebody random.
Somebody at the line of the gas station.
Somebody, how you doing, yep, you on the list now, um, dead as hell.
They what?
They gonna just drop dead.
To get my wish, they gotta die?
They gotta die.
What kind of supernatural shit is this?
I didn't ask for that.
And a lot of people be like, yeah, nah, I'm too good of a person for that, I just don't want no wishing none of that. Um, if you don't pick anything in this scenario, everybody dies, you the only person left on earth, everybody but you, yeah, you here by yourself. Get to live forever.
Well, which one would I pick?
Yeah, what are you gonna pick, what do you want?
Yeah, I would definitely pick somebody for the great good.
You can't pick the person.
So in order to get my wish, there's somebody would die, but I wouldn't know who it was.
You don't know who it is, but you not gonna choose.
Somebody that you've come across in your life at some point in time, but you won't pick who it is. So somebody you laid eyes on and consciously knew existed as a human.
They would die.
They will die.
Just so I can have one wish.
No, because you have a wish, not so you can have a wish.
You got the wish anyway, yeah.
Or you don't, and everybody can die except you.
I wouldn't let everybody die. Y'all would let everybody die?
That's not, it's not about us. It's about Need a Love, so what are you wishing for?
If somebody's life was on the line.
Oh, it is.
I don't know, oh my god, I would.
People've got some things, people.
Cause I was thinking selfish at first, now it's like.
Yeah, nah, it's, it's selfish, yeah, it's, it's about you, yeah.
But I wouldn't be able to enjoy, like material things if I knew somebody died for it.
Yeah, it's pretty much.
So you can only wish for material items?
Yeah, it's not like magic, magic, it's just a little magic.
Yeah, you can't wish for all the fairies in the justice.
Yeah, nah, just something you could be like, okay, this.
I can put my hands on it.
So for, for instance, we had somebody, uh, that wanted to own Equifax, I think it was.
Yep, he did say that.
We had somebody that wanted a hospital that was fully furnished to take care of sick children.
They said that.
We had somebody that wanted a field to frolic in.
Just a field of flowers.
Whatever it is.
Not a frolicking field, oh my god.
She wanted her own field to frolic when she pleased.
You gotta be specific too, cause somebody wanted a boat, and they ended up with a canoe. Yeah, cause they just set a boat.
No, I'm not saying that, I would, damn, I'm thinking now, like, what would I do? I would build a mansion that's big enough to hold my family.
Like all the folks that was in Highlands?
Yeah, all my family, I would get land, and it, but it had to have a sex room, like dungeon or some shit, like.
You a Fifty Shades of Grey.
Yeah, I would have like an extra. Yeah, just somewhat ducked off, that'd be like my special, like, if somebody had to die, at least I could get my sex room.
They got a big ass skeleton key lock on the wall.
Yeah. Down at about like, people like, why neither go in, I think that's would be my room, I would do that, I would get, but I would give my family, I'll make sure they was good, it's big ass, nice ass, paid off, mentioning, it's a paid off. And if, if that, and they got some of their little family land.
That'd be fucked up, the genie leave you with a mortgage.
They gave you the bill. Hey, wait a minute, brand a genie bag. I would do that, that's, that would fit, that would, that would, that would be enough, I would have enough of my family, give me a clear conscience, so I did something for somebody, but I also have a peace for myself.
Okay then, I, who, who died for this?
You remember when you stopped at that red light and you saw that person picking their nose?
Actually, I just saw somebody doing that yesterday, oh my god. She looked at me and I looked at her, she kept on rolling, like, girl, get out your damn nose, I was thinking that in my head.
Looking at her booger and she fucked around and swerved.
Oh no, my gosh.
She died with a booger, right?
That's a messed up genie.
You got a dungeon now.
And a house that's paid for.
And some land, it's like a little family compound. Like Boosie's here, yeah, yeah. Love land.
Yeah, the, I'm trying to think.
They might have, they might know each other.
The moral of the story was that everybody got to keep going. So my family got going with a little bit of extra, but everybody, the world kept going, besides one person, I, I live with it. I live with it.
I'm with that too, I, yeah, one person could go for me to get some shit.
Same message, same message.
I can't lie. I can't, I was like, I wouldn't.
I'm fucking with it. I ain't even gotta pick.
I wouldn't feel bad.
Wait, is we, tell me, what is NLE?
The Needers Love Experience.
The Needers Love Experience.
Yeah, NLE is the, like the little, kinda way I use like a, like a, like a halfway, it's so damn long. Yeah, I love to try.
The abbreviation.
Yeah, acronym.
Okay then.
Yeah, so Needers Love Experience is the, the company name, LLC.
Okay, what, what is the Needers Love Experience?
Ooh, child, the experience is, so I am a serial entrepreneur that basically looks for anything, I have businesses, Kayla, to love, sex, and relationships.
Okay then.
So you got the igloo bubble tents, we just did one yesterday for Stormy Steel of the Love and Mary Huntsville.
The igloo bubble, the igloo bubble did.
Ain't nothing sanitary happening in there.
No, 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 it's just luxury dating.
You can rinse it out.
Yeah, that's luxury, that's just, that's just something for people to do that looking for romance.
Okay, alright.
Then I do coaching, which y'all know about, the love and sex coaching.
Okay then.
And, and then I sell toys, and I, like, so pretty much anything sex, master sex expert, I have, so it's like a three way.
How you pick what toys you wanna sell?
I've been in that industry for years, so being in it for eight years, I know what good lubes is, I know what good toys is, I can, I can look at a toy.
What like from customer?
Touching it, like material, like some toys have really like bad silicone and, or like jelly, or whether it's, you know, good battery life on it, like what speeds come with different toys, um, how they, lubes and lotions, if like any after effect, like I can pretty much.
What are you ranking the rows on a one to ten?
The lowest.
The lowest? Alright, I just, I see it on Facebook, I don't know.
It became, y'all know how it is, people got, get it, got it because it was, cause it was hype, like popular. And I think because it was an air pulsation toy, so it pulls, like, people didn't know that that's like a squirting toy. So it kinda hyped it up, but actually it don't have, most of them don't have good motors in them, they don't pull as hard as, you know, like another one that's like. Yeah, you get, you get some other ones, boy, they'll, they'll suck your life away, but that rolls ain't, that rolls ain't about that life. So I don't, I, I wouldn't, it was my least favorite, so most sexologists is our least, so, least favorite toy.
Oh, it's like, you in a community?
Yeah, it's a whole, it's a whole.
Pull up gang gang?
Yeah. It is a, it's a career field.
Uh huh, that who you gonna click up with?
But we do talk and we communicate, we go to conferences and stuff like that.
Be in that group chat. I'm trying to be in that group chat right now.
Let me learn something, the sexologist group chat.
The sex coaches or sex therapists and all, I mean, we here, we here it all, we, we really do. But I started off selling toys, that's how I got into business.
So you could give me a robot?
Yeah, definitely, I can get you whatever you want.
Don't give me a sex robot. Don't judge me, y'all.
They look heavy.
And I need the one that walk.
Oh, you, that's an expensive one, you don't want like the plastic one.
Nah, I'm gonna take like, I'm gonna take like a mortgage out on my house.
I was finna say, you gonna have to spend some money on that one.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a second mortgage out.
Cause they have the ones with no heads and stuff.
You gonna name it the same, you gonna give her a name?
Dish wash. Can it wa, I need one that wash dishes.
Ah, it said a sex toy, not a, not a robot that wash dishes.
We gonna do that too. We gonna do that too.
You want the robot to wash dishes and have sex with you, that's all, that's all. Like when they writing down the requirements of every robot, be personalized. Okay, what would you like your robot to do today?
I'm bullshitting, I, I gotta lay there.
You said that, good comeback. She watching. A good man in here. He like, hell nah, don't get me in trouble. I don't want that shit, babe.
Check this out. We set up a dinner. After you, you got your, all your property, all your, your mansion out here, all your family out here. We're gonna have a special dinner to celebrate.
What is it gonna be?
It's up to you. It don't even gotta be right here, hey.
Oh, yeah, I would do a big old, like, I want one of those Jesus tables.
Okay, nah, it, it can't be with three people now.
Oh, I gotta pick on? My family watching this. Like, you, you trying to start an argument.
No, no. It ain't even, I mean, I don't mean no disrespect to your family, but it's a little bigger than your family, yeah.
She could have a Jesus table, y'all could all be there.
If this table, Jesus could be there if you want him to be there.
Okay, so who?
Or SpongeBob could be there. Three guests from any time, place or thing. Could be a cartoon character, could be a real person, could be somebody that passed, somebody from the past. Could be somebody you assume is from the future. It don't matter who these guests are or how these guests have materialized. You have a choice of three.
And they coming to dinner.
They coming to dinner with me.
Donald Trump, is someone gonna say Donald Trump?
Pulling up with the pad.
I would do, you said past, like, like now, like.
Anybody, anywhere, anytime. A book character. It could be a microbe.
Okay, alright.
Whatever.
I'm a money girl, so I would be, it'll be. I want somebody rich. Who is rich? Oprah, Tyler Perry, which one? Which one richer?
I don't, I believe, I, I feel like Tyler Perry.
I wanna be at the table with somebody rich, so it'd either be. Oh, Rihanna rich too now. Rihanna rich, rich.
And her dude finna get locked up or something.
I would choose, let's have me somebody rich. I'm thinking somebody I would, I would get along with too, so like I would have the vibe with him, so I think. It would be me, my, my, me, my daughter. My daughter, cause I have one kid, my daughter's daughter, cause if, you said I can go in the future. And then somehow to rich as hell, so that we build a generational love. And it would probably be. What person is coming, this ain't opening any type, Bill Gates or something like that, like somebody rich, rich.
You can't somebody like that. You gotta pick.
We never had nobody go in the future and get somebody before.
Me, my daughter, my daughter's daughter.
So you gotta say your granddaughter.
My granddaughter.
She didn't wanna say that, yeah, my daughter's daughter. Nah, grandma.
Oprah. I want somebody that gonna teach them how to get money.
Black girl magic.
I ain't in mine. Going down at the table. What, what done that? What we haven't done that?
Oh, we having dinner in, um. I always wanted to go there to Jamaica.
Okay then.
Let's take it to Jamaica.
That's what's happening.
On the resorts.
If I, if I could like instantly learn a second language, it would be patois.
Really?
I, I don't know, I just love.
Everything about Jamaica, yeah. I'd go to Jamaica.
It look hot as hell.
Yeah, it's hot as hell.
It is hot as hell, yeah.
They don't dance here like they do there.
I don't like the dance.
I would love it. I would wanna see the culture, I think Jamaica, yeah. But they said the resorts are beautiful. With two kids at the table, we gonna have to have some like kid, like we gonna do a buffet.
There's gonna be chicken nuggets on the buffet. Put some chicken nuggets, chicken strips on down.
I was trying to say, on that end, and then for me.
And her future granddaughter.
That's why it's gotta be a buffet, that's a mom emsol.
Is these chicken fries?
And a bologna sandwich or something, I'm just playing.
A bologna sandwich?
Y'all ain't had a, a good crispy bologna sandwich, ooh, child.
I said I haven't. Hadn't had one in a while.
Like the real good.
Yeah, I bought some somewhere, there's a barbecue place and I was like, nigga, look, they sell bologna sandwiches. And I got one, it was like way too thick. Why is it so much bologna?
Did they have anything else on there?
After about a quarter of the sandwich, you couldn't see nothing but, but moist bread and bologna right there.
Damn, that's, I would never get a bologna sandwich from a barbecue. You ain't seen them pictures of them big old fucking.
Have not.
And he's a bologna?
I was like, where the fuck does this come from?
Well, they gotta make their money worth, you know, they gotta put a piece on that that's worth it.
She would've gave me a knife. She used some of bread, shit. About three sandwiches.
I'm dead.
Alright, you uh, you said that, you mentioned that part of what you do, um, has to deal with teaching people how to date correctly. I recently had a thought that I'm kind of stuck with now. And I believe that all this time, everybody should have been living in a world where we have a temporary date, a temporary relationship, like setup. Like that's the idea going into it is we're in a relationship for three months and after the three months, we'll reassess this. Would say you?
Would I agree with that? I think it's perfect.
Okay then. Look at that, you certified.
I think it's perfect. I think a lot of people sit, uh, people, I tell people, people date with a marriage mindset. And that's not good, cause I'm not, I'm not, I may be here for a, a short time, a long time, and I think you should always assess six months, two years, four, five years. Come back to that table and be like, you still wanna be, you know, check box more than two because, you know what I'm saying? People, a lot of people waste a lot of time. You know, and if they had the option to leave and they chose to leave, then let them.
It would be easier if, if that's how, if, instead of having the marriage mindset, like you were saying, if people grew up knowing, like, when you have a relationship, you don't have to really have it for this much time, it's, it'll be fine. And if, if people grew up with that mindset, I think it'd be easier for people to do that, but I don't think that people can as easily now. Would, how, how do you try to help somebody? Let go of a relationship or end something that probably should have been ended a long time ago? Like what's, what's something that you would tell somebody in that scenario?
I think a relationship, cause people just missing honesty, you know, like people around them. They sugarcoating it. Oh yeah, we understand. You can talk to somebody, depending on who you talking to and stuff like that, you know, someone, all, everybody, I tell them. You single, date. People are single and not dating, it's weird to me. Date, they like, well, I got this one situationship, I'm good. It's like, no, like you, you, you had to go out there and date them all.
Like if you do have a situationship, which still is technically undefined. How, how are you supposed to date someone else if the person that you're already dating is feeling some kinda way about that, cause then you not gonna be dating them anymore?
I think that's the people that miss, that's what I was saying, like a lot of times when I'm in my mixers and we talk about this same thing, is that dating is dating. You know, and people jump from situationship to sex to feelings, where sex is bonding and now you got all these emotional connections, now I feel tied to you. But in reality, if there's no commitment, if there's no trust and, and there's no, um, real love, then what are we doing? You know, we just wasting space. And date, date them all, date everybody, because dating is skill building.
Okay then.
It's skill building. Because if, I learn, if I'm with you and I learn with you, right, but people don't learn it though. People learn how to hook up. We learning how to hook up right now. We learning how to build bonds with no accountability. That's stupid, then I might as well go on my business.
Where, where does the account, where does, how does dating add the accountability?
In situationships, that's where add accountability, because now I'm creating emotions with somebody that I don't necessarily want to be accountable for the emotions that I'm creating. So I want you to love on me, I want you to lay with me, I wanna grab, have all, gravitate to all these feelings, but we, but you still my man, that's not my man and my woman, that ain't my woman. That's where accountability come up, but in dating, you don't have accountability to anybody but yourself because you're treating everybody as a single person. So I'm single, I don't have accountability to you or nobody, because in this single journey, I'm learning, hey, I like this, but I don't like this. And I can learn how to exit, I can learn how to answer.
So in that scenario, you're not treating them the same as if you would treat them in a situationship?
Well, not necessarily, you know, I tell people a lot of times, people think if, if you, if I'm saying that date, they mean like be selfish. No, oh yeah, you're selfish, but you're not hurting anyone, you know what I'm saying?
You could be in a situationship, but you're dating. It depend on whoever's perspective.
I think it depends on a lot of people's perspective to where they're, no, because if you're dating, you're intent, there's a difference between a situationship and, and, and intentional dating. Meaning that the intention behind this is to get to know you more, this intention is to grow with you, you know what I'm saying?
That's the dating part.
What the fuck Alexa tell mine?
So like, I'm intentional, as long as we, we haven't made any, so a lot of people take situationships and they don't have any title, so I'm just. We dating, but we secretive. We dating, it's just always so unreal of them.
But if I tell you like, I'm not trying to have no situation, this just is what it is.
Yeah, we just getting to know each other.
We not going no further than this point, then that's, I'm not dating anymore.
When you, when you say we're, what makes the difference between a dating and a situationship is the communication. I'm telling you in a date that like, we just going on a date. If I took, if I pick me up, we on a date, like.
Just going on dates.
Yeah, we dating, that's it. It's a sexual connection, then we understand that we bout to have sex, we communicate, yeah, but if you in situationships, most of the time, people are creating emotions by several dates and several sexual encounters and, and, and calling up when they had a bad day, you're, you're building your bond up.
If you called a motherfucker when you had a bad day, that you in a relationship.
You, you going towards.
All relationships.
Yeah, but nah, you know what I'm talking about.
You could have a friend.
You finna go together.
That could be your friend though.
But are you staying them that they're friends?
If you tell them that, then.
I think.
You tell them, right?
Yeah, you gotta tell them, yeah.
Like, yeah, nah, we, we friends, I mean.
But we fucking. But don't catch no feelings. Who can do that? Who can do that? That sex was good right there, you know, lay onto me baby, oh, but don't catch no feelings, like it's, that's the part of it, that's, I feel like people don't take accountability for that, if your relationship, you know, but if you add a sexual relationship, now you tripling that bond. It's like a soul tie, you just keep adding.
Yeah, I feel like men are, are better at that than women though. Men ain't really gotta catch no, we could sit in this motherfucker all day.
I don't even think it's that, I, and I don't mean to cut you off, I think that men can have the feelings, they just can. Like that, you can, you can put this where it needs to be, understand what it is, address it the way it needs to be and.
To deal with your feelings.
Letting it be, would guide you through whatever, whatever your next steps and shit is.
Right, I think a lot of men can navigate single life a lot better than women. Um, but not all, but some of them can. I think it just comes down, the most with men, you may see it's like a little jealousy or, you know, a little, a little loyalty, like they want to know that it's theirs, like if I'm, I'm fucking with you, I'm fucking with you the hard way, for real, for real, I'm taking you out on date, I'm spending money with you. I wanna know, like, you ain't giving that thing nobody, like, like a lot of them feel that way, so, you know what I'm saying, like.
You gotta, don't, don't spend money. Would you got your hair?
Then that would be friend dating, you know what I'm saying? That's different, cause I'm spending my money, spend money, we understand, but most of the times, that is not what happened, we going on dates, I'm sp-.
I be learning shit, I didn't know, since I started this pod, I didn't know this many people be out here fucking as much as they do.
We in a hookup culture. We back to like hippie days, but in the open. They, they used to go to one field, everybody come over here and have orgy. They out in the world right now, like, you know, it's hookup culture, hands down. So yeah, people are having sex and create, that's why I'm saying on the accountability, is that if I can take you out, I, I'm gonna want some in return. I'm spending my money and my time.
This dick ain't free.
You giving everything. People gonna want some in return. I tell you, I've never, I, I've seen certain relationships, certain people really can be in that space, that limbo, you know what I'm saying? But when they ready for a relationship, no, most people can't.
Somebody gonna end up falling.
Somebody gonna catch feelings.
Every time.
But okay, well, then catch them, pick them up, hey, look.
Catch feelings if we ain't gonna be together, this shit gotta be. They gonna want you all the time.
If, what if you're still dating and you know that they out there doing it, like getting, like this nigga bringing them presents and.
It's called life?
That's, that's, you, I think you have a logical way of thinking, which probably would.
You just deal with it. It's gonna be fun all the time, but you deal with it. If it's somebody that you actually is a friend with.
If I don't like you that much as you like me too much.
He said, if I like you and you don't like me. And that's another thing too, in situationships, there's always one person that cares just a little bit more.
That's every relationship.
Yes, always just this one person that get, that get, get, get good kick. It's always somebody that gonna humble you, I don't give a damn, like. You know, I was like, God damn, you know, this motherfucker made me sick, you know what I'm saying? So that's where it come from, that's why I think. But I do, I'm not talking down, I know someone, I know, they was like, well, I have a very healthy situationship, which keeps them from being with other people. But the question is, is if it's that healthy, why y'all not together?
Cause then it wouldn't be a situationship. They not together.
Motherfucker, put, put your taxes together.
That don't mean they together.
That's the question, if it's that healthy.
In the ether.
Uh, they somewhere floating and, and that ain't on the orb, and I have seen it, yeah, I've seen it, where they, I mean, they're happy in their, their situation. Yeah, but there's just no. Be like, okay, so I'm gonna say all are bad.
So, but would you, would, so would you tell that person? That's your friend?
If that's, that's inside of this, um.
In the ether.
The healthy situationship. I said what I just said. If, if it was that healthy, why y'all not together? And if, so until somebody answer that for me.
But that, isn't that like a redundant question? Because I, if it's healthy, if that's the precursor for how you're describing. Nothing, because they have this healthy situation. Like, they're already together as much, like, if, like, you could you can push magnets together to a certain point before they start repelling. Right up before that, they all, it's all good. Maybe they don't need to go past that threshold that would start repelling them. And right now, where they're at, it's fine. You could make them spin around each other, you make them do all kinda little things from the force. And, but as long as you don't put them too close together, they're not gonna knock each other apart.
Sound like a marriage to me. I ain't trying to be funny, but that sound like a good old marriage. I mean, that's all I'm trying to say. Sound like the long-term commitment, you know what I'm saying?
So if it worked, it was, I don't, was, wouldn't need explaining.
I think for me, it just comes down to, you know, what, what's stopping y'all from crossing that last step and not, and that, and I try to. I do believe, I believe that, I believe that people can be in long-term relationships and not necessarily, like I don't wanna put any hetero normal to, you know, on people relationships. I believe people, some people I know are partnerships, you know, where they're just partners. You know, but the commitment piece is always there. I think that's the difference. That's the, I think that's the only difference for me, the commitment.
So if you don't, if there's not, it, I'm, I'm asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there's not a if there's not a distinct singular partner that you're dedicating yourself to, then there's not commitment.
Yeah, I think it's the commitment, the piece that, that, that solidifies, you know, the relationship. That when you're out and about, it's not, I'm single and I'm, I'm, but I'm, but I'm not single, you know, I'm like a confused area, yeah.
Have to be solidified in the commitment statement. Like, is it like, if I get locked up, you bailing me out on God? Like, is it like, if I see you with somebody else is a problem, but as long as I don't see you, it's fine? What, what are the factors that say that this is what locks us in? Cause I, I think it's really important if you're virtual, yeah, like, it's really important. Got anything, you supposed to go get me.
I think for me, the commitment piece comes down to the willing to, um. Like, I guess. like, I guess, tie it together, like, I'm committed to the process of you.
What's their tie look like? Their, their tie, for that relationship you talked about for your friend, if they were to commit or tie the process up correctly in your mind, was, what does that look like?
It wouldn't be my man that's not my man, or my woman is not my woman, it's just my man and my woman.
Can they have more, like, other people that ain't they man and woman?
If they're, that's what their relationship requires, I'm not saying they have to live together, or they can agree to be poly, or all these other uh, poly, you got tri, truffles, they got all types, as long as it's committed to the process, that's why I said the process of the love. And it's not just my man, it's not my man, because then technically, you, it's like a, a double edged sword, what do you mean to you, is, is he your man or not your man? You know what I'm saying, that's that part, they want you introduced and say, are you, are you in a relationship, uh, you know, yeah. That's the part, you know, not just, but feeling that you, trusting that you can say that that's my woman, and that's my man without looking stupid. And that could be broad too, but trusting it, I think that's what it comes from, the trust, the commitment, the respects. I think if. I think she wants more, but most of the time, we settle. We settle, and it's not that settling is a bad, I think it's just, it just depends on what stage of life that you're in. You know what I'm saying, like, sometimes we, I could be in a fucked up situation, this person just make me fucking smile, it, shit, or they just dealt for me in a way that nobody else is, you know what I'm saying, so, sometime we just end up in shit, you know what I'm saying, like, stuff that just kinda just fall into place, and it's like, well, that wasn't supposed to happen.
Motherfuckers I be dating and shit, like, that shit doesn't ever work.
It just be like some random, like, oh, that shit just fell into, you know, play.
Yeah, I don't really think you can look for relationships, I don't think that's something, in my, in my mind, in my experience, how I view the world, I don't really think that's something you can do.
But I feel like that's why you date for real.
I know that's the purpose of dating, I don't think there's.
But yeah, that shit don't work.
To look, like, go out and search for a person.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think there's a good success rate for that, I'd assume it's probably like seventeen percent.
Like to go out, I think it's about making yourself available, and that's, that's it, like, make yourself available to date.
Maybe, yeah, I'm not gonna do that.
Cause people don't do that. People don't do that, it's just. But, you know, that and social media, people go, you know, behind telephone and text.
I can't hear.
But most people are not making themselves available to, to even meet a person.
What about the apps, tell me about the dating apps, that's a good thing, that's a bad thing, what you think about the dating apps?
I think that we spend eighty-five percen- eighty to eighty-five percent of time on our cell phones. So, was it genius for someone to create some way that we could connect instantly, yeah. However, do I feel that dating apps are the best, no, I mean, people just be on there cause they bored, I mean, I mean, you really gotta filter through that motherfucker, like, for real, for real, like.
I ain't never been on there before.
Ugly motherfuckers on your ass, my boy. I told you I was gonna get on them, I got on, I'm, I'm talking about, I downloaded, like, cause I, I thought, I was trying to shoot for some shit, and I thought, like, we gonna get some content out this shit, man, I gotta, I downloaded like six, seven apps. Cause as soon as you download one, it'll suggest another one. Same bitches on all of them, and they look the same on all of them, oh my god, this whole, I don't understand. There was one or two where I scrolled by, and it was like, I know that bitch, ooh, let me get off this motherfucking app. I wasn't thinking that, I wouldn't, I don't be on no dating app. Got them hoes off my phone with the quickness, got them up off of there, yup, got them right, and then later on. Fuck that. I'm not doing it or them or nothing around, them or it.
I'm glad I ain't been dating since they done had dating apps and shit.
A lot of people don't like them, uh, some people meet from it.
I thought folks be on there just getting, I thought folks be like hooking up.
There's Tinder, ain't, ain't that one Tinder?
If that's who y'all hook, if that's who y'all hooking up with, stop.
Tinder's big, it's really considered the hookup app.
Stop it right now, this shit's, ugh.
It's gotta be some attractive people out there too, Bob.
They got a lot of them though, every, everybody wanna date now.
Apps, not attractive people.
I think dating apps are like Walmart, like, you know, sometime you go in there and it's just some weird ass people.
Y'all, y'all, the dating app do be laid out all different, facially, body structure, all y'all be laid out different, just like the Walmart, she right.
What you gonna see when you go on a Walmart, like, that's how I feel about them dating apps.
Ay, that shit was.
I'm glad I ain't gotta deal with none of this shit no more.
And I seen Facebook had one, and then it was gone like a few months later. Like, nobody.
A lot of older people on that one. People don't, that's the reason why I started the Singles Mixers, because it was like, you don't go out and meet people, people, like, I ask them all the time, like, if I was, if you was at a store, would you shoot your shot? Most of the guys will be like, nah, like, these women, they turn, they won't speak, they won't stop, and like, even if I think she fine, like, woman was like hawk her down, and then, you know, you weird, you know, they get, they treat people so bad in the streets.
I didn't whip people that had been mean to somebody. And just had to try to hold my laugh in, but I also felt bad, like.
That's what somebody said, they said the rejection out here is real, so they don't feel comfortable shooting their shots, like, you know what I'm saying, in public. But women always say they wanna be milked, met in public, so it's kinda like.
That's how we used to meet women, for real. A motherfucker would go to Walmart to meet women, goddamn.
I use, this probably the fourth or fifth time I done grown my hair out, it used to be so easy for me to start talking to some chick and be talking about getting my hair done. Easy, that's, free throw. You can't talk to nobody, that, try it. They don't do hair, and if you say something about it, they probably gonna talk about your pocket. Nah, you can't afford somebody to go do your hair while your hair ain't done already, would you, like, the whole, it, it's a whole list, it ain't the same no more.
Yeah, and then dating apps also lets you create the illusion of who you are.
Y'all in them filters.
Yeah, filters and fake bios, and people on this, whether they got kids, you think you talking, he got like seven keys, like, wait a minute, that's not what your bio says.
You don't know her baby daddy about to get out?
Cause I think people, but, people can be who they wanna be on those apps.
Yeah, nah, this shit crazy, that shit was, it was weird though, to like, look and see people saying the shit, like, it would, the stuff that, the way the way that people present themselves and talk on them apps, like, they is the shit. I dare you to act like you even could talk to me. And look like Bigfoot put on a Timberland and kick him in the face, like. I'm talking about.
Hey, I ain't nothing wrong with a little confidence.
I don't, I don't, see, I don't, I don't subscribe to that either, but that's a whole nother conversation.
Even if you ugly, act like you pretty.
I think be a little more realistic about your actuality.
No, fuck that, be pretty, goddamn.
I think you just be confident.
You don't, no.
Why, you can't be confident ugly?
Reasonably confident, okay, reasonably confident.
Why reasonably?
Why not?
So you can be just confident in yourself and, and not be cute, like, why not?
Well, you can be confident in your other attribute. So I call it big booty.
Oh my god, I'm so thick.
Nah, don't be, don't be, don't be posting no picture talking about face card.
Y'all know y'all got that, but y'all know y'all got that old ugly homeboy that be, that be acting like he fine and then a motherfucker. Y'all know y'all got that one homeboy.
No, I, I really, all my homeboys have always got bitches. Everyone I've known, and I thought it was weird.
And you were like, that nigga ain't got no good, like, he got.
I don't have no homeboys.
I got a few, and they get mad, quit cussing them girls out, that ain't their fault they don't like you.
That's like I be thinking when I see people that got ugly family members.
What, well, it be pretty people in ugly families too.
I got a couple.
Most of the time, the, the ugly be through the family.
You know the pretty person, and then you see their family, you be like, oh. That's your sister? We're like, who was that, how so?
For how long?
Yeah, alright, that's a whole, anyway.
Me ain't right, me ain't right, me ain't right at all, but nah, I'm, I'm so. I've been thinking about it, me and my old lady like to travel, and she tell me about these couples retreats you got going now.
Oh man, so we got a second annual one, and that's being Chattanooga. Last year, we did it in Garnasville, so it's like a loving intimacy retreat, so the whole thing is just relationship health and intimacy rejuvenation, cause I used to, I was in the army, and we did the same things, like, we take couples and soldier couples outside, but I wanted to be more like affection and having fun and getting out with your partner and getting in the streets with your partner, like, doing stuff that you wouldn't normally do at home. Um, as well as learning, like, how to do sensual massages, or to do yoga together, like, to actually connect, the way when you leave their retreat, you're, you're rejuvenated. You get ready, you ready to get back to life together like that, that's my vibe.
Massage will make you tired, yeah.
Rejuvenation, yeah, cause some, most people, like, are y'all in relationships?
I am.
No, and relationships take up a lot of time, and most of the time, if we trying to get to the bag, you know, trying to live right now, like, sometime we feel like relationships take up So, when, when, the good thing about retreats is like, get away, like, allow yourself a break from all the other stuff and just focus on us and what we doing, and like, that little bit of weekend can be enough to fill you up for seven months, you know, like, damn, we ain't went on a date in a while. That last one we went to was just so powerful, you know what I'm saying? Such as these little nights where we trying to slip in some sex and some Netflix, you know, like, just being at the home, like, well, you know, babe, I'm home, you know what I'm saying, so it's, I feel like that's the good part of it, and so, for me especially, I'm, I got like business, businesses, like, I take, I take my vacations with my man seriously. Cause you know, like, shh, if not, then we, I'd be like, uh, we last.
We about to do for a trip, yeah.
Next week, actually.
Nah, we ain't gonna be able to go next week.
I'm actually going to meet some ladies tonight, you might wanna come over there and see what y'all, we'll see what you're up for, a whole, a whole room of women.
Oh shit, go ahead, Bob, I can't go.
See, I told you he was a good man, girl.
This is room with any women in it, I can't go.
That's what I'm talking about, it's a smart thing, smart thing. But yeah, like, that's just what it is, like, that's what the intimacy retreats and stuff, like, I was, I just wanna cre- create a space, and my workshops are small, like, come in.
Like, the, the retreat, like.
Um, I don't do anything over fifteen people, I like everything that I do to be small and impersonal.
How, wait, how's it?
Yeah, if somebody got two.
Fifteen, well, I don't know, retreat twenty, twenty, up to twenty people, but I'm saying in my studio. My studio is about fifteen, but that's just because I say that, but anytime I'm doing any type of couple workshops or anything, small and, um, personable, because if someone needs that extra attention, I wanna be able to give it to them. You know, or couples having a hard time, I don't wanna feel like they paying money, y'all went somewhere, you like, damn, it was fun, but I ain't get to get the whole gist of what was going on, cause there was too much shit going on.
They gonna put your Facebook profile up, and you like, go to her page, y'all, don't you ever go to her retreat?
Shit, I want some people that is like, you know, gonna give some reviews, and then they, I know that they had a good time, cause we invested into each couple, you know, so that's why I keep them at. Um, so this year, we going to Chattanooga, last year, we was in Garnasville. Every year, we'll try to travel a little bit, we, we, I've never been to Chattanooga, so I'm excited.
Oh yeah, yeah, I fuck with Chattanooga, it's, it's like a, it's similar to Huntsville. It's a little, it's a little more water for real.
Another weekend, man, I might've, I might've pulled up, another weekend, and I might put, I can't do it this weekend, I got shit going on, but another weekend.
Next year, we going.
Yeah, I got a couple, and now I got singles, so I got stuff for both of y'all, so that's what's up.
Okay, then.
Got couple stuff, couple workshops. You a single, you pulling, why you, why, that's my question, why men don't come to singles mixers?
I don't, I don't know what a singles mixer is.
I ain't, what is a singles mixer for real?
Mix and mingle with other single people.
Everybody at this bar is single, and you know they're for real. And we here because we single.
Say they single.
Ain't no such thing as a single woman.
Seventy or eighty percent of women or something got a backup dude on hold.
It's my old faithful.
It ain't just a geyser in Yellowstone. Babe, who OF, OF calling?
Yeah, O- old faithful, that's the big problem. But singles mixers are good, a lot of people do like speed dating, like, okay, speed dating, why, like, those type of events.
That seems weird to me.
And people always ask, like, you know, why guys don't come to this, I'm just wondering, like, why y'all think men don't show up for like speed dating?
Speed dating seems like the concept where if you really was, like, that would be like a live Tinder, that would be like, we just trying to. That's what speed dating seem like to me, that don't seem like the same as a mixer single.
Yeah, I had one guy tell me that men don't like to be rejected, so that's why they don't come.
Yeah, nobody like to be rejected.
I feel like, nobody like to be rejected.
I was just talking about how it was a couple girls, a long time ago, that I said yes to, cause I ain't wanna reject them, like, I don't wanna be rejected, I just. Now, we gotta break up, my girl, they really like you, you got a really cute.
But yeah, some, some people can't deal with it more than others, I, it ain't never been an issue for me, like.
You get up in that thing and be chilling and.
I wouldn't go to a speed dating. If I was single, I would, a mixer sound like a good idea if I'm single for real, and I'm looking for somebody.
Think you're a good barometer.
Why I'm not a good barometer? Explain yourself, uh.
Yeah, what you mean?
This is like, of the people that you would know in your life, and spend enough time with, around, he would be on like the Mount Rushmore of self-confidence. This man right here needs no help, no amplifier, no, uh, no, no support system.
He got an inner starter peg, just inside of him.
I don't, I don't know anybody that's more confident than him about everything.
If, what, what, what can I do? I can do anything, you put your mind to it, Lavar Burton taught me that shit, but I was real little, I was real little, he was like, shit, whatever you wanna do, nigga.
He'll be the hot thing in the.
He's not, he's not a good barometer, and I have, I have really cocky friends, I really do, like, people, like I said, like, the dudes, I, I thought, and it's weird, cause I really did think about this the other day, like.
I ain't cocky though, am I? Damn, you sound like my old lady, I might be. I might be, yeah.
But yeah, I, I know, I know a lot of people that are very confident about themselves, and have what they consider to be the track record to show there's a reason for it, barring them knowing each other or not, this person is not the right barometer for self-confidence at a mixer or any other type of situation.
I appreciate it, Bob.
Yeah, man, hey.
You coming that thing too confident.
Yeah, nah, he's, hey, I. I appreciate it, cause it, you know, it gives me something to strive for.
I feel like, I, I, I know who I am. They might not know who I am yet. So I'm, yeah, you gotta learn first, but yeah, I know me already.
You true to who you are, that's where the confidence comes in.
Already know me.
Look, I'm trying.
You gonna get to know me, you gonna like.
What about you? What would you come in like at a single mixer? You come, you like you come in shy, or would you have?
No, I'm a shy person, I'm, I'm.
I can see that. He looking like shit.
For real, for real.
If I know you, I might be foolish. He ain't never seen me even be.
I am shy though, for real, for real.
If I know you, like I might be foolish around you, but in general, I've, I'm more of a sit back and read the room kinda person. I don't really want to interject myself. In in my experience, in most of my life, I don't need to put myself out there for things to happen for me. So I never really needed to take those, so I don't, I just be chilling. I I just go and chill. Cause if I do, if I do move like that, then usually it kinda becomes off putting to people. I'm a little too much for people.
Bobby is a lot, y'all.
Right amount of where the confidence can stop. That's why he don't think he cocky, cause if you.
I'm coming to terms with it.
If you not, then you wouldn't say he's cocky. You would say he's extremely confident though, but he he stops right there.
But I can still play the background. I I can just come, I ain't really gonna put myself on front street until it's already time to be like, okay. Like if I go somewhere most times, like esp- if it was me and Bob together, we both in the club. If somebody gonna come over here, like, oh, Kato, yeah, 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 like I ain't just searching for it, but they they come for.
They fuck with you.
Tell your bitch quit smiling in my face.
She almost crashed the other day, she kept looking and I, I don't know why she was looking at me, but you better tell her.
So what, would you come? I'm gonna invite you. I'm gonna send you a personal. Then y'all come back and talk about it on your podcast.
My bitch can not go for, for uh, research purposes.
Talk about, she ain't gonna let you go. That sound like.
A mixer, I got some shit you can mix, nigga.
We, the next one's gonna be August thirtieth.
Yeah.
That's a whole month away. It's just a vibe. Look, we just survived. There's no pressure. Look how you look.
Don't feel real.
I'm gonna send a message. I'm gonna say like, you said you were coming. You gotta bring it back and talk about it.
Do the background. I'm not gonna mix.
You just gonna vibe and then come back and let me know how you like, that's all.
I'm God, you know?
Okay, then.
That's the weekend I'm getting the kids.
Got the kiddos. But yeah, pull up, put through the y'all can use on y'all podcast and y'all can keep talking about. I really trying to create something in Huntsville that's not, no, like people ain't really, and where the singles go to, you know what I'm saying, like?
I don't know, I know there's a lounge or two that people go and act bougie in that ain't really got more money than anybody else. I don't really know where they're at or why peo- what people do in there. I ain't been. I've been telling myself, I'm gonna go buy some clothes and I'm gonna go to one of these places, but I don't do it.
Yeah, they do the work, keep trying to get me to go, they go to the cigar lounge. Yeah, nah, I I could smoke a cigar at the house.
That too, cause like I can't light a blunt in between when I'm doing.
Nah, you can't do that, you can't do that.
In between, like in the mixer?
Whatever, I don't know.
Come back to like everybody else. They right out the door and come back in.
Yeah, I don't know. By that time, the hoe gonna be talking to somebody else.
If you were here mixing with somebody else, man, I thought we was mixing.
It's so mixed and mingled. You just mingling.
You un-mixed me in this motherfucker.
And then towards the end, I said, yeah, we mixing mingle, we play guns and shit. I got a little mini pool table, they be talking about my little baby pool table. It's a little pool table, little, little cornhole.
You be on there trying to run folks for their money.
You can in the back though, somebody probably get on that witch and then.
Nah, that sound cool. That's, I, I maybe, I'm, I'm like.
And then you like this portion. At the sea, yeah.
Yeah, nah, I, you know what I'm saying, I, I maybe.
I would say, and then at the end, we we apply a little pressure.
Okay, at the end. After you the mix, you go pick what you.
No, 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 no. After you done enjoyed yourself, return the lights on.
Yeah, yeah.
Enjoy, turn your lights on and then. And then we do a little topic, cause I believe that people come in on a surface level, so like she fine as hell, you just saw her. You ain't gonna go up and like have no deep conversation, you know what I'm saying?
Now, see, cause now.
You gonna be like, hey, you gonna woo woo.
You gotta be honest.
Right.
The ratio of women that show up.
To men?
No.
Just women in general?
Yes, out of the women that show up, the ratio of women that look good and don't look good.
I, you want me to s-?
Yeah.
I can't do that.
You can.
Well, I think, first of all, I think everybody that has came so far has been beautiful women and all of them have, have met or got a number.
Some ugly people been there.
I'm finna say.
Some ugly people been there.
I ain't seen no ugly people.
I bet they been there, they been there.
Y'all gotta come in and let me know, like.
I gotta go.
Uh, but yeah, you know, i- i- if women say the same thing, they like, oh, well, we want somebody fine, then you know, whatever. But the reason why we do the apply pressure is for that one reason, because I feel like people are attracted to looks, right? First and foremost, but to apply pressure at the end is kinda like these type of conversations as well, like if, just for me sitting here, I can vibe off y'all. I can kinda see how y'all is, just from like little generalized questions, you know what I'm saying? How you, how you think about dating? I would just say, very outside of a box, you know what I'm saying? You don't, you don't, like inside and stir that bitch up, that would not be you. Like, you know what I'm saying? You think outside, so I would, I would know that just from having this conversation with you. I think it allows people to have a general sense without just looking at, cause she might be fine or he may be fine and then they talk, they may be dumb. They may be cocky, like damn, she was cute.
Manager, I'll never forget this. I ain't in on good terms with this man, but I'll never forget this. And somebody said before him, he's the first one I heard say, uh, no matter how fine she is, it's someone, somewhere who can't stand her. You right though.
Somebody somewhere said.
That makes about sense though. Y'all always got an enemy, but that's the part that I like, cause I find it weird that like this one girl, she came in, she was so cute, bubbly. She was like, I love my black man, my black, just all pro. They all lost, saw her as like a chill friend. She was seeing all the right things. When you got this one woman over there, she is definitely emotionally unavailable and combative as hell. They like, we like her. They like, wait a minute, it's the same thing with the ladies. This one dude. Twenty-five, we done had twenty-five to about fifty that just showed up, like.
I hear about it there.
What if I go with an old lady from across the street?
And I'm gonna say that they like, like, like.
I don't wanna go with somebody I know there.
Well, then you can leave.
Just don't go over.
You can get, you can leave. I mean, they, it ain't like you gotta stay. Most people that do come, they not coming. Yeah, you gotta see, stay and then we go downtown after, we may go to Stella's, we may go out, like, you know, kinda chill, so then you get to know more people. So most people single, they don't go out. So this is a time to kinda go mix and go to like a little bar.
Shut up.
I'm just saying, Bob, y'all never go out.
Bob, pull up, Bob?
Pull up, Bob.
I'm gonna be in there, but like, pull up, Bob?
Alright, I might pull up.
Go mixing mingle.
I am a, I'm curious how you went from whatever, whatever your childhood was in the country, barefoot, running around with your cousins and them. To selling sex toys. What, how is that transition?
People say that all the time. I think that that's always a weird concept.
Somebody in your family, was it a family friend, was there a video or ad?
I was gonna say, everybody always got a naughty aunt, so I think I turned it into that somehow. I turned into the naughty aunt. I'm the family naughty aunt. Um, but the reason why, I don't know, I was, um, when I switched, I was in the army. Um, we did couple strength building and stuff like, that was my job. But I noticed that they didn't really hit on the things that matter, like sexual connection and intimacy, and I was married at the time and having those problems. So I felt like we went to the church, we went to the chap, we went everywhere looking for help with this issue. And it was just no help, you know what I'm saying? There was nowhere to go and say like, I don't know how to connect with my partner. Or people who have addiction to porn or issues with not know, I don't wanna be touched. I love this person. I don't wanna be touched all the time, you know? I I wanna you, I I love our sex life, but it's getting boring. We doing the same thing over and over again. You know, these are things.
It sounds so cumbersome.
Or I'm going through menopause, you know, or I'm having a baby and sex don't feel the same. You know, who the hell we talk to? Like, you you ain't gonna talk to your homeboy, cause that's just gonna be uncomfortable as hell. You ain't talking to, yeah, it ain't, women may talk to their mama, but then now you gonna go around like, your mama know what we doing, like, you know, like who do you go to?
I don't really wanna.
Exactly. So people ain't really trying to have those type of conversations and I went through it. So it was more like, that's where the passion started to like, I wanna do it, but I was already selling toys. I was always like.
So how you get to that?
Freedom. I just always wanted to be sexually free. Like, I wanted to, I always been curious about.
Since like watching a Disney movie?
No, actually my mom, look, actually my mom.
When she was little, she thought all the other girls was looking at poker hammers too. And I thought that was hilarious. So I'm just, that's why.
My mom is a big entrepreneur and she's, she's owned plenty of businesses and she sings and she's church woman, but she sold toys when I was younger. So she sold some pure romance.
The family influence.
So she did, and I remember like going to a party and I saw how much she made. So when I was older, they don't really switch up the product, so my friend invited me.
Dildo queen pen.
Yeah, oh no, I'm the dildo queen pen. My mama was like, she was selling to the streets, baby. I was selling it to the world. I was out here, I was out here slinging toys, like for real, for real.
Better learn some.
Look, but.
Respect on that name.
Period, okay? That's that master sex expert around here. Y'all got any questions? But yeah, my dudes was like, started. And my first time going to a party, like I was in the army, I was bored as fuck, you know, wasn't in a, really wasn't in a great marriage, I ain't have shit to do. I was like, I wanna get outside. This lady was like, well, you would love this, you make money. And my first party was like, nah, I hung out. After that, it was like, oh, but I, I can do this, you know, I got the personality for, I'm very like open, I ain't shy about it. I'll help whoever and then that's when the passion kicked off. So I basically married the passion of the army and wanted to help from what I was dealing with. You know, and trying to help other people and it just kinda built itself. Um, no, I did, I'm a bachelor in the military.
Cause a lot, that's, a lot of women that I know that end up having something to do with or going to some type of sex party, they end up finding out about it, getting into it in college. It it seemed like it was those same kinda years for you where you ended up being like, nah, I'm a.
Yeah, and.
Maybe not in schooling at that time, but those same years of your life is when you be like, you know, I'm finna go, I'm finna go see what this shit talking about.
Yeah, I didn't think it was a career. That's what they don't teach, you know, like a lot of these things that we learn about in, in building LLCs. Like we folk been doing it way longer than us, you know, then I, when I got out in the army and I wanted to build a career, I was like, oh, is it college? For this, I get some certifications for this. I, so yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get all the, I can build a business for this, billion dollar bit, like. Okay, sign me up. So that's where that came from. So now I am clinical, clinical, um, trained. And I have the certifications and all those things to be sexual wellness.
Plex on your wall? Okay, like they walk into the non-sex partners, see plaques?
So it's the actual office and yeah, desk and behind me, you got all these plaques and then they sit down on the couch. And it's kinda like, I would say sessions, like therapy, but I'm not a therapist yet. I'm in for my masters.
Cause a lot of people. I think that, um, I think there's a lot of people who try to figure out how to get into business or get into entrepreneur type thing. And they never had anyone, especially in their family, to follow footprints of or get knowledge or information from. And it's good to see that even someone who had, a lot of, I I'll say that a lot of times, that's because no one before them did any of that. They're the first ones to do it. Even with you being a, a second generation of it, you still didn't necessarily have the blueprint to how to do it. The way that you've done it. And you could see that it could still, you could still be in a situation where there's preceding knowledge. And still have to figure everything out on your own, kinda. So it's good to see somebody come from both areas. Or both areas of doing that and figuring shit out to the point where you got plaques on your wall and you making legal legitimate money doing this shit like.
That's the crazy thing. A lot of people don't, don't understand what it is, cause we don't teach sex. And my mom didn't hide it, but she also was at church and that's why, like, also I worked, was, was like in the military, working with family life in the chaplain. But I was selling sex toys, because it was always just a comfortable space, I guess. I just, I'm in that thing, huh?
Where, where you go in the military?
Uh, what did I travel to? Germany, Fort Jackson, um, Texas, um. Where else? Went to Dallas a few times. We, no deployments for me, I'm happy to say that, but. But I did go, no, no, no. No, no, I want that pole. Um, but that, and then uh, Fort Rucker down towards Alabama, so that's how I ended up back now in this way. My last duty station was down towards Dethan.
Cause I know, I know, uh, Europeans in general seem to be a little more liberal about the sexual. Just everything about sex.
Amsterdam and the, the red light, well, the, you know, the red light districts or, um, the little red cabins, like, like, just lit up. Like, they would just have a heart over it and you could freely walk in and get sex. It like, it's not illegal. Technically for soldiers, it is, technically. Yeah, cause we're still under the, we're still under the government of the US, so we couldn't go, but you know, but.
Over there, cause we put you over there.
Yeah, you ain't no damn German, yeah. So they'll go to jail, but other than that, they were just very like nu- nudity. Yeah, like you go to the wrong place, your new beaches and all that, you know, my friends used to pay good money, try to go to a new, they did new. It wouldn't be nobody over there but old people. Just out there living they best life. I said, that's a, that's a dream for me. I wanna go back when I get older, just walk around naked as hell, just letting this sag loose. Yeah, one day we was in the, we was in the sauna and this white man came, his boss was just, he was just, my homeboy was like, bro, like they, they, they don't, they don't have like. No gender stuff, so he just walking, him and his wife just came and took their clothes. We were like, uh, like, you know, so they very, very.
I'm finna go.
What he say? Boy, you can't walk in these folk live.
But nah, we finna get out of here anyway. We've been, we appreciate you coming. Tell the people where they, how to find you if they wanna find you. How they can get in touch with you?
Need a Love Experience. You can Google it, you can YouTube it, you can TikTok it. I mean, I'm on everything, at the same thing. WWW, I Need a Love Experience, Instagram, TikTok. I don't do Tinder, I'm not Tinder, Twitter. I don't do Twitter, cause I just never understood the app, but pretty much everything else, um, i- in that form or fashion, you can find me at Need a Love Experience and that's where.
I'm finna catch up with you and your homegirls next time.
I'm ready to come paint. You do painting sip too, though?
Yeah, we headed there right now, headed to humanity. No, well, she did one time, I don't know, I don't know about this, yeah, like, yeah, but this time. No, no, not this one, not this one. They just gonna vibe out, but the paintings are nasty or nude, like, you know, kinda sexy. You know, you know, some, some combs.
Y'all gonna see me in the streets with Need a Love and her homegirls.
Y'all better, cause he gonna pull up.
They getting appetizers, cause I'm leaving early.
But we going down tonight, you know, so it's gonna be a vibe. I like, I like, I like teaching, I like training.
We appreciate you coming through, man. Hopefully you come back.
Y'all a vibe. I would have to bring y'all, what y'all think about doing y'all podcast live at, um. At the studio to get all these single questions.
Yeah, we could do it.
We spontaneous, we'll do that shit.
Pop up on you, I ain't that way.
Y'all more than welcome to stop in and email I got going on.
All this is pretty much getting kept. It ain't like we going from the cut.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, it's gonna be a record of it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can go back and say, and, and video cord.
We don't be leaving nothing, gone for y'all. It's, we are, it's the Smoke Permitted Podcast, it's special sessions, it's Kato Jackson, I'm Bob Jaquez. That's Need a Love, two five six seven eight eight seven three three nine, asksmokers at gmail dot com, we'll see y'all next time, man, we out this bitch.
Smoke some, man. Ay, look, this is for entertainment purposes only, explicit motherfucking content. Parental guidance is strongly suggested, pay attention to what your kids doing on the internet. Subscribe, like, share, Smoke Permitted Podcast, let's get into the show.